Okay, I call the meeting in the order for today for June 7.
You're altering the order.
Before we get going, Kevin is not with us today because he had open heart surgery yesterday, three bypass, so we wish him well in his recovery and I think Grant was up there seeing him yesterday and I think he's on his way to recovery, so good news there. Next thing, we have the approval of the agenda and I would like to remove item number three, which is the diversion joint powers agreement. Kevin has a lot to do with that and he had some changes on that that he wanted it done and I'd like to remove that from our agenda until Kevin can come back hopefully next week.
Will you approve with the change?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Next thing, citizens to be heard, is anybody here today who wants to speak or they just came to watch me or something, no.
Nancy.
Okay, point of recognition. Very good. Hey, we have five people we're gonna recognize. We're gonna start off today with Ryan Carey, fifteen years of experience, send him with grateful recognition. Congratulations there, Ryan. Is Bill here or Bill coming today? Okay, very good. Mark, I don't see Mark there either, is he? Okay, very good. Okay, without going to the highway department, these guys have twenty years of experience, Don Culp and, I don't know, we'll bring them both up here, Roy Green, let's bring them both up here. He's a great operator. No, these are the guys that get out there, this is the people, the people see these guys out there all the time, everybody else seems to be in their offices and we don't see them. You guys can't sit down yet, you know, you gotta sit up there. You know what I'm saying, you're done, but you're not. So, I'm just so glad, I mean, these are the guys that we see out there every day, the people see and the ones that they complain about, no, compliment them.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words about both these individuals, they both are running morgue raters since I started fifteen years ago. Don runs up in the Georgetown district and Rory runs out of the Felton district. I think Don's been running late for nineteen years, going on twenty years, almost his entire time with Clay County, been running a morgue rater. Very good at working relations up in that area, he takes care of the roads on a personal level, he lives up in the Georgetown area and I almost never hear a beat from the roads and the work that he does for us. Rory lives up in the Felton Yewan area, he's been up there for about fourteen years, going on fifteen years running the morgue rater.
Yep.
That's all right. Again, Rory, not only is he very good with the neighbors up in the area, he's related to most of them.
I know.
Once again, both these staff at Clay County, I don't ever hear any bad words, they do a very good job and that's directly related to the service they provide, they care about what they do, they work hard, they're always there, you don't ever have to keep an eye on them during storms, they know what they need to do, they take care of the equipment, you know, they both run equipment, it's over three hundred dollars a piece, so they both manage part-time or full-time truck driver in the winter time for following the roads, so they got a lot of responsibilities and I appreciate everything you guys do and hopefully we are here for another twenty years.
I know, Don's involved in videos, we meet at Georgetown last night and I saw Don there.
Yeah.
Involved in Georgetown up there. Next we got, well, no, she's here.
Oh, yeah, she's here.
She's got twenty-five years. You know, I know, whenever I come to the second floor and see Nancy, she's always got a smile on her face and stuff like that, it's so nice to see that. I don't know, she must be taking money in all the time or something. Brian, you got something? Let Brian talk with you before you give your speech.
Yeah. Laurie couldn't be here today, she's out of town on a conference and she asked me if I would say a couple of things and I said, "Well, it's pretty difficult for me to stop at a couple of things." Oh, the nice things, oh yeah, what happened to her? But, no, Laurie didn't ask to tell me to harass me more than once because it's some nice things about Nancy. Nancy always has a small opinion, she's always got something to say, she's just giddy about her job and her life and it's just such a fun person to have around, county got her material right since the day, and besides, she spends half the time in my office visiting her Vicki.
Remember, that gives you the good part real quick.
No, but that was part of the good part, I just gave her about half the time, but she's a good communicator, she keeps involved with all of the things that are going on with our office and the Auditorial Treasurers Office and it's just a joy to have her around here and she, her most positive thing is her positive personality and friendly atmosphere that she creates around here, so thank you Nancy.
Before everybody probably gonna take off, Kevin, as I said, he wasn't able to hear and he gets sent an email saying, "Please congratulate Ryan Carey and Mark Empting from the Sheriff's Office for the fifteen years of service, Don Culp and Rory Green from the Highway Department for twenty years of service and Nancy Canalka, Deputy Auditor for twenty-five years. Their experience and longevity provide the county with the knowledge for others to gain from and influence to our more recent employees that Clay County is a good place to make a career. Sorry I could not be there for this special recognition, thank you and congratulations." And Kevin, all right, thank you very much for being here people and you're welcome to stay, but you need to go back to work, don't you?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Okay, we have the minutes from May 17th to 24th.
Move for approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this time, I think we go to closed session, we need a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in closed session.
Mr. Chair, I would move that mediated agreement reached between Robert Rock the second and Clay County be approved as we agreed between the parties on May 26, 2016 and which is reflected in a confidential settlement agreement from general release.
Second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
I don't know that we reopened the meeting yet.
Yes, we did.
But we missed that, my apologies.
Grant made the motion and Jenny seconded.
All right, we got that procedure out of the way, okay, we'll vote on this agreement with, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed. We'll move on to Dave, paving project for Highway 52.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the approval of our paving project on Highway 52, it's with Metro River Materials out of Omege, SAP fourteen dash six fifty-two dash zero one four, this is what a five-point-six mile paving job that we completed last summer. The initial bid was two point nine two million dollars, final amount came in a little bit under. A little under on gravel and just a little bit under on the two minutes, at fifty and sixty dollars a ton, it adds up pretty quick, so it's kinda nice to be under rather than over, I guess, but the final amount to be approved is two million eight hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, so it's around fifty thousand dollars under the initial bid, so pretty much came in right on track and road seems fine, there was a little issue underneath the bridge with the ride there, but we had an effort to come back and do a little milling and correct that and I think it rides pretty good and they pretty much got it.
Whenever you use the word "under," that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the final documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Something coming from across the hall or?
It should be.
Right, do you know what then the district board meeting is on Friday, November 8th?
Normally starts at eight fifteen.
That's right.
Yeah, and I'll have to check my, I'm not exactly sure of the location.
Troy Lakes Courthouse.
It is the courthouse, okay, it is. That's where it's been, I think the one other time that was there, but.
Come on up, Shannon.
Wanna talk about being a host site for the American Corps of Volunteer?
Yeah, yeah, it's an American Corps program, it's Green Corps from the state of Minnesota. We had a volunteer, had this last program, you've heard of the program before, we were right remembered, Jeff Harris, who helped us out, it was a really great experience, she was able to do a lot of things that we just don't have staff time to take care of. And this year, we did apply as a host site and we've been accepted as a host site, but that doesn't mean that we will necessarily get a member this program year, they need to have someone apply who fits into our work detail and then they have to want to relocate to Morehead and so we may get someone. Our project that we proposed is to work with our thrift stores and then other nonprofits, also our colleges and potentially daycares or other places to reduce waste. We've been approached by one of our haulers about the amount of waste coming from the thrift stores and we just don't have someone to send out and really spend enough time with that sort of business to see what other markets they could find for some of the materials or to better sort as they take things in and so that would be the primary project. We'd also like to help the colleges pursue an exchange program, move-in, move-out program, a place that students could leave couches, futons, refrigerators that they don't want anymore rather than just throwing them in the trash or trying to find another place for them and then it would be free to take the next semester as people move in, so those are really two big projects. So what I'm asking for from you is just a signature on the resolution that says if we have awarded a Green Corps member that we will enact the same contract that we did before with the agency with the MPC regarding the Green Corps program.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move Resolution 2016 dash 22, as presented by Shannon.
I'll second that.
Okay, sounds like a very good program and.
It has been very good for us in the past, for sure.
Very good, okay. Any further discussion on it? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay.
Thank you.
Good luck in the program. Kirk.
Hello, Mr. Chair, number four.
We were talking about a front-end loader and a dozer.
I brought with me my friend here, Larry Henry, who you all probably know pretty well, he's the operator of the landfill.
Okay.
And essentially, what we're here for today is basically two items, the first item is to replace the front-end loader, as you may or may not know, a front-end loader is on a ten-year replacement period and that's at the end of the ten years right now and it's got over eleven thousand hours on it, so it's time to replace the machine. So we're here to seek permission to replace that piece of equipment. Larry went out and he talked to numerous people to, you know, get prices for the equipment and those are included on the memo that you have there and he also came up with a recommendation, so that is one of the things that we're requesting for today. The second item that we're requesting replacement for is for the bulldozer. The bulldozer is basically worn out, it's been out there for fifteen, probably close to twenty years and the engine finally pooped out and it needs to be replaced. The bulldozer is the primary backup machine for the compactor out there, so if the compactor goes down or if it's in need of repair, the bulldozer is the piece of equipment that is used to, in place of the compactor. Again, Larry and his crew out there got quotes from various vendors and they also kestrelled a couple of pieces of equipment to see what would meet their needs and with that, they came up with some recommendations, so with that, if you have any questions, Larry, obviously he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Is this dozer used for anything else other than just a backup or?
Yes, and it'll actually, it'll be used extensively in the future, as we expand the landfill, we have to strip new areas and it'll be used for that also.
Okay.
So I mean, we do have a lot of use, especially in the future.
Oh, okay, it looks like they're just gonna be there for a backup, you know, just.
And backup is its main purpose.
Okay.
But again, we will be using it extensively in the future for moving into new areas of the landfill.
All right, so we're looking at the JD six forty-four K, is that what we're looking to purchase it?
In the loader, yes.
And also the 2012 Komatsu B-65, is that the one you want?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So what is a new dozer, like that Komatsu, what would that be, this is a?
It would be in the three hundred thousand dollar range.
Oh, that much.
Yeah, we, we're trying to economize as much as we can and I think, and I think this obviously will fit our needs, so one of the things, as Larry mentioned, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, one of the things that Larry mentioned is we will be using it quite a bit here in the next couple of years, we are gonna be opening a new cell probably in the next, probably next year and at that point in time, we'll have quite a bit of use for this piece of machine, or the bulldozer rather, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, this time, look for a motion to purchase this piece of equipment or?
Do we need to do it each separately or?
I just had a question on the D-81, what is the year, I know that we need to replace it, what year is it at, how long have we had that one?
The other dozer that we had, it was a nineteen eighty-seven, so it was twenty-nine years.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
It's almost as old as I am.
Yeah, dog years.
That's another discussion item. That's special, is that closed session?
I'll move to approve both pieces of equipment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, one other thing I was gonna mention, we had a couple of folks out at the, what is it, Farm Breakfast?
Breakfast on the farm?
Yeah, Breakfast on the Farm, we had a couple of folks out there, we had an intern and Stephanie, who's our roster person.
Did a good job.
Yeah, they did a really good job and they had a really good report, apparently there was really, really good turnout.
I think they set over twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so it was really, really pretty exciting and I was glad that we could participate, so we're trying to get out as much as we can and we're gonna get out even more, I think.
Yeah, some other booth, I think it was Brett or Brock.
Yeah, Brett, Brett's the intern, he's from, he's from the college and he's gonna be here for the, basically the entire summer and then Stephanie, obviously, she's out here, been the roster employee, so they did a really good job for us.
Thanks for having them there.
Thank you.
Georgia, just in time, purchase security cameras for the family service center.
Morning.
Good morning, Georgia.
Joe and I were working with the Safety Committee and the Building Committee and then the MIS Department and we sought bids for our quotes, excuse me, for our security cameras for in and around the family service center, we received a total of three quotes and we're recommending the purchase from TCB Communications in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What kind of cameras do we have around the courthouse, just for my kind of reference?
I'm not real familiar with those, those are ran through, I believe, through the security in the court system.
But there are similar.
Correct.
These cameras, will we hook up them with the people downstairs here?
Through the computer department, through the MIS department, you can view them, the court security would have access to view them through our current network and then anyone else that's assigned access to the system.
Okay.
And they record up to ninety days.
All right.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay.
Thank you.
Get them set up. And with that, we'll go into committee reports, Wayne, we'll start with you today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on Thursday, May 26th, Family Healthcare, General Business, report on how diagnostics are done and monitored, report on the accounting and revenue cycles of the family healthcare, there was an operations report, financial presentation on the operational budget, staff compensation and outside contracts, then we have the chief executive officers report and all as well at Family Healthcare. Wednesday, June 1st, Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting, Board meeting, General Business, local collaborative time study report, which is a report that explains and tells how much money comes in from the state, collaborative coordinators report, we received the fiscal year 2016 budget and all is on track with the budget. We reviewed the governance agreement and bylaws of the collaborative and we reviewed and passed the contract language for the contract for the collaborative entities and that is my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Jenny.
Thank you, we're doing two weeks, right?
Yes.
May 26th, I attended the Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting in Breckenridge, General Business, there was a substantial amount of grant applications that they are working on right now and we will be sending team leaders to a large training, so that was approved and yesterday, I attended the Egg Subcommittee hearing that was organized by Congressman Peterson's office and Kramer from North Dakota, it was at the Marriott in Morehead and because I serve on this oil and water and watershed liaison, it was important to listen to those presentations. It was quite informative on how drain tile can be used to help mitigate some flooding issues and, but also with water quality issues. The Nordic Farm by Roth Say has been a water quality, not test site, but pilot project that the watershed approved and it's really fascinating to observe how they have allowed the programs to prevent any wash-off from chemicals and so part of what the presentation yesterday was talking about was how drain tile can help with water quality. And then I attended the Eggs and Issues meeting this morning, presentation by the Fargo-Morehead and West Fargo Chiefs on the drug epidemic, if you will, that our community is facing and it presented a good dialogue as we've continued to hear how our services are being strained because of the needs, it helped enlighten, I think, leaders that were there and it needs to continue to be on the forefront of things that we help fund. That concludes my reports.
And Breakfast on the Farm.
I was at Breakfast on the Farm as well, yes, thank you.
I also attended the Chamber event this morning, it was excellent, Jenny gave a good report on that, I had Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting a week before last and it was for a Prairie Lakes meeting, it was fairly positive, so it didn't seem to have too many major things going on right now, they didn't, they didn't really, you know, we've gone through that arbitration and we're waiting for the results of that, which apparently will be sometime later this month, so hopefully that'll be positive, they seemed pretty positive about the way the arbitration went, so that was it for me.
Okay, too, a couple of weeks ago, I went to, on Tuesday, went to Hartland Trail meeting and a lot of discussion there on Buffalo State Park, how they're involved in the Hartland Trail, it seems to be that they really wanna get involved in doing something there, but if that's gonna be sort of a staging area, they have to do something with their parking and stuff, so gonna be a lot of work involved in this Hartland Trail, the more, the more we get into it, the more, not problems, challenges that are coming forth on that, you know, and gonna be a lot of work on that yet. They're looking at possibly meeting there at the Buffalo Park and walking through the park and seeing what kinds of trails and stuff can be done there, so maybe a walk-in exercise next meeting. Wednesday, I went to Linden City, the, to the city council meeting, they had a tax increment findings and they're really working on trying to get some development on the southwest corner of Linden, they're trying to get some, I think about a hundred and thirty-two lots developed there that they're working on trying to get going, so interesting meeting there. Thursday, at Solid, on May 26th, Solid Waste Committee meeting, Kevin and Grant weren't able to make that one, I attended that and we had Burns and McDonald, they gave a presentation on that methane gas that we're trying, we're looking at using methane gases as a heating source out of the sanitary landfill. I mean, it's a free gas, but I'm gonna have to be convinced yet that it's a good thing to do, I realize the gas is free, but it looks like it's gonna be a lot of maintenance involved and getting it there, getting the gas to, to the building and also having a unit that's gonna handle the gas and, because it's a dirty gas, so I think they're gonna come up with a complete report probably in another week, but Matt Evans gave us a pretty real good report on all the things that are involved in using methane gas. Also, Julie Kennedy gave us an update on the household hazard waste. This week, last Thursday, I went to Holly, they're working on their comprehensive plan down there and they got a very, pretty good report started, but there's still a lot of, Metropolitan Council of Government is doing this plan for them, but as we went through it, we thought, oh, there's a lot of, I mean, when it came to population, three different places, they were referring to population in the report and it was three different figures, so they gotta get, a lot of tweaking to be done on that report and they're gonna come back again, I think, next month with some more results on that. Yesterday, I met with Brian, going through the agenda, last night, I went to Holly, city council meeting and talked a little bit about these meetings that we're trying to formulate with the cities and trying to get their impression whether they would like to present here or whether we wanna have a channel meeting, meet somewhere, you know, find a place, a location that can bring all the cities together, you know. Last night, I went to Holly, city council meeting, and talked a little bit about these meetings that we're trying to formulate with the cities, and trying to get their impression whether they would like to present here, or whether we wanna have a general meeting, meet somewhere, you know, find a place, a location, that we can bring all the cities together, you know. I think Holly would be receptive either way, they wouldn't mind coming here and presenting their stuff, because Holly's got a lot of stuff going on there, and they're even looking at bringing in a new area, annexing some territory into Holly. After Holly, I went to Georgetown, and talked about the, I mean, at all the meetings I went to last night, and discussed the jail, and also these meetings that we're coming up. And Georgetown liked the idea, think of everybody getting together, that they can share ideas that way. If they're all here at one time, they can share ideas, you know. After I got out of Georgetown, I went over to Yulin Township and discussed, just gave general updates on the jail to them. Then I went to Felton City Hall, city council meeting, and also discussed the same things that they are getting. They were sort of in favor, too, of group gathering instead of individual gathering, too, so I don't know if anybody's checked with any of the other cities or not, you know, but the three that I checked with, you know...
I've had the same response from Barnsville as well. They're really interested in having that discussion, and more so not at a courthouse setting, where either Holly or Barnsville would be.
Well, like I say, Holly was very receptive, either way, they think it's a good idea, and right now, it sort of looked like, more like a group setting. They feel like they can share probably, you know, if you apply for a grant, how did you get the grant, you know, how does it all work and stuff? And I think we'd have to have our people there, like, we were talking to Safe Road School, I know Dillwood used that thing, and I know Linden's gonna use that, and I think Holly was interested, and they're looking at that, too, so I think they could share some ideas that way, and how to apply for grants, and what grants there are out there to apply for. So right now, the consensus seems to be more like a group meeting, if we're gonna pursue that, and I'd like to see that pursued, I guess. And I guess I was at the meeting this morning, too, AIGs and Issues, and we already had a report of that. That's my report. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting with, I should say, Kathy McKay, Public Health Director, Tim Magnuson, and Bruce, and I met over the Otter Tail is expanding their public health into the food service. The state has been, in the past, has been doing their food and beverage inspection, and now Otter Tail County is advancing into that, and they're hiring some of the people that were working for the state. Anyway, Bruce has been engaged in the overseeing of that, and we talked a lot about a time commitment on his part and different things, so what we came out of that meeting is that if that is to push forward, and Bruce's time commitment is going to be greater, that has to come through the board, because we've had other issues of time that people spend outside of our county in regards to those issues. So we had a long discussion about that, so before that gets launched too far, it'll come before the board for consideration, and so we had a good discussion on that. I had a conference call with, it referenced the diversion and their visitation to Washington, DC, I believe it's June fourteenth and fifteenth, that they're going out again. They wanted Minnesota representation on that, and Nancy Otto is agreeing to go, so the county won't be partaking in that. I did attend the Solid Waste Meeting, which your chair was nice enough to fill in for Commissioner Waylon and Campbell, and I think he just went over some of the many things that are going on in Solid Waste, which we've talked about here. We spent basically a day-long session on the mediation, which concluded this morning. I don't need to say anything more about that. I did miss the six entity, or no, the five entity financial presentation and the diversion authority meeting that day because of the, we ran till, like I said, five-thirty with the mediation. I had an evaluation, personnel evaluations, they're kind of ongoing. I met last Wednesday, Georgia and I met with many of the tenants at the family service center, because again, their, this parking issue keeps coming up and coming up, and they also did inquire about security, and after night, after late hours, especially in the wintertime, when they have counseling sessions or group meetings and things, and they get out of there later at night, and they have to walk quite a distance for parking, they are concerned about the lighting and the security cameras, so this was a good move that you did today in regards to helping that out and ease some of their relief, and I assured them that cameras don't necessarily relieve the attack that may occur, or the theft or whatever, but it would help in apprehension, but it also provides somewhat of a deterrent if it's known that it's camered. So they feel good about that. We had a conference call, Dave and I, and I think Justin was on the conference call, referenced the new jail and the soils issues over there. We spent about an hour and a half on that, and I think it's something to be discussed, certainly at the jail construction meeting, but one of the things that you saw when construction engineers presented was the fact that if the, we had to put down pilings there to support the foundation of the jail, it would be three point six million dollars or up to that much. They've done more examination, they were concerned. First, the results were very positive, but then they came back with some more studies on it, and now they feel they can do it with geo-pilers, it's called, cluster pilers, where they drive them down into the ground, and they can do that for like three to five hundred thousand dollars, so a tenth of what they were talking about. Plus, it even provides a greater support that maybe the spread pilings that they do put in won't need to be as big. So overall, it's a real positive result of the soil testing, so we spent quite a bit of time on that as well. We did have a meeting with the city, their county attorney, and our county attorney, Assistant County Attorney, or I shouldn't say their city attorney, and their finance people to work out more of the details of a lease agreement between the city and the county. That will go to the finance committee pretty darn soon, because we feel we've got some real tentative agreements on that. Jenny sat in on that, we met for a couple hours again. We had management team meeting last Thursday, and what we did, though, we concentrated on, remember this spring, we met with the managers and the commissioners to talk about how we can make, continue to make Clay County a better place to work, and we took the ideas that were generated there. Mark Sloan worked on a presentation, and we met in small groups and tried to prioritize and narrow down, and we'll bring some of those ideas to you in a priority fashion next time, or not next time, but soon. We've gotta do a little more work on that in regards to, from a management team standpoint.
Are we foregoing a committee on that one, then?
The...
I know we had talked about having a committee for those needs, is that something that we're able to work through as a team?
Yeah, not necessarily. I think it would be good to have a committee, we just felt we needed to lay some groundwork and prioritize some of them, maybe take one or two off the table so that we can narrow the focus of what to work on, so.
Thank you.
It was just a follow-up, we didn't want it to die. We felt we did some good work at that meeting, so we wanna keep that, keep that going. I did meet with the city of Morehead, oh, gosh, I can't remember what day that was last week, but they are meeting with their, the diversion employs a lobbyist in regards to, on behalf of, and Kevin did know, and on behalf of the Minnesota entities, and studying that, so we met in regards to, that had some good discussion in regards to approaches there. Attended on Friday, the administrative meeting of the diversion, and we talked about a lot of things, especially the JPA and the approval schedule on there, with us delaying it now at least one week, you know, June fourteenth is next Tuesday if we consider it, or I guess we would, we'd go to the twenty-first, we can do that all right, too, but just for your folks' information, they do need appointments to the committees by June twenty-third, because it's important that all of it get finalized by July first. So, and the appointment that they'll need is, you know, under the agreement, we have two board members now, or the county commissioners will have two, Clay County will have two elected officials, meaning you folks, on the diversion authority, and you'll need to make that other appointment, I think, right now. Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Waylon are the appointee and the alternate, so, but you have to give some thought to that to make sure that you make the appointment by that time. So we'll keep you on track in regards to that. I did attend the new higher orientation, we have five people yesterday from social services, public health, and the county attorney's office. Frank, I met with you, or Commissioner, I just met with you yesterday. Met with the courts yesterday as well, they would like a little more space in regards to a visiting judge, they have the location picked out. I'm gonna work with Joe, Joe sat in on the meeting as well, so we're gonna take care of that. We continually work on some personnel issues there, and I had some, got some issues going on there. Attended the AIGs and Issues this morning. And the other big thing I wanted to land the table for you folks is, and I don't know, I guess this will come through the construction committee meeting as well, but one of the things that we need to solidify pretty soon is the home sales and the demos. We've done the inspections, and we have kind of discussed all along that the homes probably aren't good enough for resale to have an auction on, but we really formally haven't discussed that with you folks, and I just wanted to feel comfortable that that's okay with you guys. We are looking at contacting house movers for the, probably the sale of the garages and any sheds, and there's three or four that might be, and we wanna work through maybe a home mover like the city of Morehead did, and because we have to have those moved out by the middle of summer, especially in the western block, so I guess I'm not asking for a formalist, more or less, information right now, and we'll move forward on it, so.
Mr. Chair, I think those are, that's an administrative decision, that doesn't have to come before us.
Okay, well...
That's my opinion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanna keep you guys up to date, and I wanna know that we're going in the direction that you folks wanna, wanna go on in regards to...
Well, I think we have to do, let people know about it, I guess, what we're gonna do with it, you know, because I'm getting several inquiries concerning these.
Okay.
Especially the garages and stuff, so I think we have to let the public know how, well, of course, what you probably will do, you know, if we do sell them, you know, how are we gonna do it, how can they get a hold of one, you know?
I think so, too, because I think Morehead, at the beginning, had contacted house movers, and they quick moved the houses up, and a lot of them said, because it took a lot of time to, for residents to kind of figure that out, whereas at the end, when people were told there were more floodhouses available, those people were able to contact movers, I think. So I agree with Commissioner Gross, I think in some way, we need to advertise the fact that if people want them, they're available for...
You're talking about garages?
Ah, garages and houses, but I've gone through the houses, and I wouldn't recommend any...
Buildings, I'm sorry.
I don't think we'd be selling any of the houses.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, Dutch, your call.
The garages, I think there's some potential there.
Yeah, there's some potential to move those off, so, okay, very good. Well, we'll proceed forward and bring something forward on the, on a contract or something, if we contract with the house movers, so you'll hear more about that, so. With that, I think that's about it, Mr. Chair.
Along the line of those houses over there, like this morning, again, I see there's parking situations, you know, where we have jury duty going on and stuff like that, but are we gonna allow people to, I mean, are we going to, there's a lot of driveways over there we could park people in, you know, and it's just, can we park in there, or should we tell employees that they can park in there, is a no-no, or is there a responsibility or on our part?
Yeah, well, the only thing that would be at issue there, well, a couple of different things. One, we are doing ongoing cleaning out there, tearing stuff down, we're having load, so things are being dumped, they had a dumpster in one driveway the other day cleaning things out, and then also, the inspections have been pretty much completed, but now they are doing the mediation on the asbestos and different things, so we'll have trucks and trailers back in there, and then we're gonna start demo pretty darn quick on it, so.
Very good, okay.
There's just lots of activity that's gonna go on in the next couple of months over there, especially in the west block.
I'm here doing that, okay, I just wonder whether it's available for some situations, because I, in fact, I was gonna park in one driveway there today, and I decided not to, but just, I hope we don't, if someone does park in the driveway, I hope we don't take them right there.
Oh, no, we wouldn't, no. When it's jury day, and I talked to the courts about this yesterday, that when we get a established, more established parking lots, and probably then if we label the lots, it would be very good of them, when they contact seventy jurors to come in, is that I tell them, instruct them to park in Lot C, or whatever it may be.
Good point.
That would really help, so we need to do some coordination, you guys, to parking around here, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, also, next meeting, five-thirty next Tuesday, our meeting is, so, know that time change. I don't know, is Kevin scheduled to be on some meetings this week, that we have to replace him, or someone should be taking care of that, or...
Well, the diversion meeting, I think, I'll be there, so.
Yeah.
All right, so he's covered?
I think so.
Okay, very good. I know the next township meeting, I've been working with Gary Berg, on November twenty-first, I know that's a long ways off there yet, but November twenty, we got, I think, they're gonna be at the Dilworth City Community Center in Dilworth, and if we are gonna do these city meetings or whatever like that, I would, one of the recommendations I would make going, I'm getting to Dilworth, just they have a big community center there, and I think that's available, I mean, we have to find a date, but it would be available.
I think Brian and I, then, will work on getting a date for the summer, contacting those agencies and...
Because I think the charge is minimal there. Yeah, okay, that's all I got, but anything else? Stevie, got anything you need to...
No.
Okay, we're adjourned.